You know what, just to speed things ahead, I'm gonna hold that thought. Um, I'm gonna, so this is a really good thing sometimes, leave a note. Um, check if Borg scale, RPE scale is invented in nineteen eighty-two or nineteen ninety-eight. Space that. Um, I changed the formatting on this cuz I try to hand it in a little bit quickly. Um, just gonna go back there. And I'll just finish up on some of these pieces that I have over here and then make sure that they're referenced when I go back through it afterwards. Um, the rate of perceived exertion is a scale which quantifies the self-reported fatigue during exercises. Um, which was originally invented by, I don't know, Borg. Borg in nineteen question question. As a scale would quantify fatigue based on a rating zero, or six to twenty, sorry. Hmm, the lowest score, six. Um, two and four. And let's see. Um, and because I put this um, up here already as a short form, um, I'll put that over there too. Um, I can now refer to this as just the RPE scale. Um, is comparable to light to no activity, whereas the, um, how, only way to the dynamic or explosive phase of exercise such as the snatch and Olympic hurricanay. I don't refer it back. So, I'm gonna go back here, um, the source is this. Uh, I want to, I know, it is Harvard, it is a Harvard website and a scale, but it isn't really considered a, um, I'm not sure if it's considered a source of, um, just to be safe, I'm gonna go over here. Google scholar that, and, um, for somebody wh- wh- when you're referencing in a Harvard referencing, it's a great way to go take the titles here, copy, paste them, put them over here, and then source your referencing material from here. Um, over here, you have all the different citations that you need. Just copy and paste add at the bottom, it makes life way easier. Um, what I usually like to do, y- you'll see it as I continue on. Uh, sometimes you may have to put in the, uh, quotation marks on the side, and what that does is make sure, makes sure that, um, this sentence stays intact while it searches. So, there it is, published Harvard's School of Health. I believe that is a, no way, that's it? This is definitely not it, like per se. I mean, it was in the Medicine Science and Sports and Science, but I did obtain this information from Harvard, uh, nutrition source, um, which is part of the School of Public Health. This is a scientific reference, but I'm not sure if this is a scientific source. Um, just to be safe, I may or may not be referencing this, and I'm not sure if I should. Although, this is a very viable source of information. Okay, yeah, so just to be safe on stuff like this, um, I mean, it sucks because I'd love to reference something like that, but I'm gonna have to take it and interpret it into my own words, and then make sure that, you know, obviously I don't plagiarize what's there, and then I continue on with this, um. I'm not sure if you're reading this, but, uh, thank you for putting this piece of information up there, and here's my reference out to you. Um, Borg's Psycho- Psycho- Physical Basis of Perceived Exertion. Um, just referring back to what I was talking about earlier, um, this is just the mention of Borg RPE scales in, um, conjunction with the usage of the Likert scale, so it would thereby shorten the amount of, um, variables that go into this, uh, numerical variables. Uh, so the original scale is six to twenty. It seems that in, I'm not, I'm not sure what year it was, but the original Borg RPE scale was then reduced down to the Borg CR-ten scale, which is a zero to ten. Um, I'm gonna have to type that in as well, make sure that I get that. So, maybe if I just I mean, I don't know why I keep saying Borg. Just a second. Oh. Gotta make sure I got that word right, dormancy. Lying dormant, right? Yeah. Hmm, uh, let's start fresh. Open that up again. To that. Um, so what I'm gonna do, uh, I finally got a little paragraph, uh, we're a hundred and seventy-three words in. We're meaning me, basically, and, um, my man, uh, Lurks, somewhere out there. Lurks, you're here, right?
Yeah, I am here.
Alright, Lurk, so, um, we're gonna take a small intermission. I'm gonna hope that my coffee is, uh, okay. Every once in a while, like, you know, I do get stuck on topics, especially when you try to get to, you know, the original invention of things. Um, and to prevent my eyes from going extra googly while googling, um, I'm just gonna pause and we'll go through some cool weightlifting videos and keep the, keep the pace going. Um. I got the good stuff. Forget some mind activity. I usually put on these, uh, videos, um, to remind me that I can, uh, I always get schooled within the comforts of my own room. In multiple ways. Uh, this red plate and this, um, yellow plate alone is pretty heavy. You know what, um, without like going into this like way too much, um, there are some really cool, uh, cool, cool videos out here that definitely ha, just one more video. So this guy, this guy was like, this guy was like the weightlifting Superman. Allow me to fanboy real quick. This guy is awesome. And I'll pause it there. Back to work. So I'm gonna, um, get some CFA results right now. Um, put it together and then we'll see how it goes. This is, this is the part of, um, where it's really hard to not put in almost exactly what they say in these papers. It, yeah. Maybe I should start, um, so I'll start with the validity first. Validity, uh, meaning, yeah. Validity meaning how appropriate this test is to actually gauge the factors that it's meant to gauge. So, how does this actually quantify fatigue? And how valid is it of a test to quantify fatigue? Um, later on, looking at reliability, reliability will say, how many times can this test be repeated? One day. For many things. So they have both the rating of perceived exertion and the session RPE. Um, per session RPE is a RPE that you're taking per every session of the weightlifter, uh, I'm sorry, the athlete performing. Um, the average RPE can be like a weekly measurement or like a nightly measurement. The session RPE would normally occur before and after the session or just after the session. Not sure if I should include that here, but huh, maybe I should. But I, I really wanna get into the, to the reliability and validity first. So what I'm looking to, to get here is, what is the reliability? Yes, but in what context? And what context is the reliability relating to what I'm actually talking about? So, if they're talking about something like this, um, it may be a little bit strange to me. Um, it may not be relevant, not strange to me, but it may not be relevant to, um, what I'm writing about. Sorry, my eyes keep getting googly. Um. This is a little bit closer because we're talking about anaerobic threshold. Um, it is kinda nice because weightlifting is somewhat of an anaerobic, uh, type sport, but an anaerobic threshold, it's more like a steady state, I would assume, so I'm gonna put that off to the side for now. This might be it here. So it looks like they took the RPE scale and related it or compared it to the values of the heart rate? Uh, the heart rate reserve, um, so this seems to be probably the most decisive factor when uh, the heart rate reserve has been around for quite some time. Uh, I'm gonna have to request full text, I'm way too lazy to do that. Just gonna start clicking around. See if I can find it. I mean, this is enough here. Uh, the R value, uh, referring to the correlation between two factors. So they're talking about the average percentage of heart rate reserve was well correlated between the session RPE from both the Borg CR-ten and the Borg RPE. Um, we're going back into the Borg CR-ten, which is the ten, the ten rating scale, and is it a twenty rating scale? It seems that the reliability, we're talking about the reliability when compared to the heart rate reserve, is a bit higher on the Borg CR-ten than the Borg RPE. Um, so that means the this is more reproducible over time, and then this can also be a more reliable measure when measuring, um, the fatigue of an athlete. Just because the scale goes from zero to ten rather than zero to twenty. Uh, it just has less to deal with. Um, I find that it's also hard to avoid, um, the bias of a client, the bias, biases of a person when they're rating their own scales, so, and depends on the sample size and the time. So, that, that is another reason why I really don't wanna take this right now and then put it into here, because I'm not sure over how many, how, how long this was performed. At least not yet. I do have the R value, and this would be a nice option to throw it in after. I really wanna just put that in. This is cool though, um, so, um, the session RPE is obtained thirty minutes post-exercise. Uh, very similar to the ways that I normally, um, yeah, it, it's very similar to the way that I normally program my own training, um, because it is somewhat of a dynamic Um, because it is somewhat of a dynamic factor. However, I don't like fully issue out um... A survey, I kind of vocally ask each athlete that. That feeling when you finally find the paper and then it's like, I either have to buy it or request it. Um, ResearchGate is awesome though, cuz you find some of the best papers on there. Uh, blood lactate concentration, also a pretty cool um, way to factor in um... Blood lactate over time, but it can be quite intrusive when testing an athlete. I think people normally, I haven't done it myself, but I think people normally test blood lactate through urine tests? Or was it blood tests? Uh, where they prick the finger? It's either or. Um, let me just make sure. I think it's a urine test, it seems, yeah. So urinary lactic acid, so you literally have to to test blood lactate for some, in some situations, you literally have to test their urine. Which could get pretty messy, um, yeah. Skip down to procedures. Hmm, based on VO2 peak. May not be entirely relevant to what I wanna test here. It'd probably be best to actually collect this off the original. Yeah, that should do it. Um, results suggest that session RPE irrespective of the moment which it is taken. SRPE, irrespective of the moment at which it is taken, to be a useful tool for assessing global exercise strain in a CWT workout. What is a CWT workout? Circuit weight training. Seems relevant enough to what I'm doing, so... Uh, one or two of these should do it. So um, suggested by Foster at, at AL as an extension of the Borg Rating perceiv-, um, perceived exertion scale. Let me give that a click. Effects of... Put that over there for now, blah blah. Some good writing, but at the moment... Uh, this takes quite a bit of work to make sure that the environment, testing environment stays. Determine the 1RM and heart rate max, pretty cool. 1RM of what? Lightweight. Lightweight? Four hundred meter track, one kilometer run. That is an interesting way. Good stuff, though. This is what I'm really interested in though. Because this, um, looking back at my high performance plan, there are a couple um, places where I've like implemented um, circuit training and uh, what's known as um... Complexes? Uh, circuit training complexes, WODs type stuff, so... This is very interesting how reliable a scale like this is to that? And in what ways? And then going back, like, hey, um, I'm a coach, or I'm a personal trainer, whatever. I have a tool, I'm able to use it. Um, looking at the work that hmm, proves that it is usable and in what ways it was usable, and then looking at somebody else's work here, this is their thesis and this is, this is very interesting later on when you go to... I'm gonna hit my vape. RPO. So I'm really only interested in RPO here. A chest RPEC, very interesting, and active muscle. But what are the determinants of active muscle? Is what I'm trying to um, find out. Maybe the active muscles within the grouping of the movement. And, and this is not, this is something I shouldn't be questioning myself when I'm referencing this and this type of work, but... If I stick to just the overall RPO, it should be fine, at least for now, because I'm really only worried about the comparison of an RPO, the six to twenty RPE scale, in comparison to another factor which may also, percentage of heart rate max and heart rate res. But, I'm kinda like in the middle right now because should I also go into detail about is heart rate max now a reliable and valid measure which to base off RPE, right? So that may be another bit of a... Bit of work as well. But for now, just to maintain the relevancy to what I'm writing, I'm just gonna stick with this. What am I comparing time to here? Time x type of interaction. What? So if I can compare the RPE to the percentage of 1RM that these guys hit or the attempted 1RM, then I got myself something extremely relevant. But I think I'm kinda going off track cuz my eyes are getting googly and sleepy. At least I wanna write a couple more sentences before I go back to sleep. And yes, I'm going to go straight and take a nap after this. Unless this coffee hits the spot. Hmm. I'm not gonna bullshit this. Oh, sorry. Hmm. Oh, just a second there, guys.